Okay, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge and then call up the prayer with Commissioner Patton, please.
My pledge is ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Lord and our Father in heaven, we approach our throne this evening in a humble manner. Ask your blessings upon us as we enter into this meeting. We ask you to bless us with wisdom and compassion and understanding to make the most viable decisions for our citizens, that each one may be edified and built up by our effort here to make our city a better place. Bless us in our deliberations that will be fair, and bless us with compassion toward our fellow man as we go forth tonight into this world. In Christ's name, amen.
Welcome everyone out tonight. Just go ahead and get started. The first item is the approval of the minutes.
Make a motion where you accept the minutes from last meeting.
Have a motion. Second, any further discussion?
And that includes meeting and special call, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Those in favor, signify with a "aye". Post saying, motion passes. Next item is the bills.
Second.
You have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with a "aye". Post saying, motion passes. Nothing under old business. First item under new business is the second reading of the approval of the zoning change for the property there on Main Street.
That's the one at the corner of, what, 12th and Main?
11th, 12th.
10th and Main.
I move to approve the second reading of the zoning change for property on 10th and Main.
Changed it from commercial to R1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with a "aye". Post saying, motion passes. We're gonna hold off on the second reading of the budget for a little bit. We've gotta have a closed session to talk about some legal issues before we can finish the budget, so. Moving on down, James, do you have anything?
No, everything's been going pretty smoothly from now on.
You feeling better?
Yeah, I feel a lot better. Should find out next week on whether they're gonna do. It'll be six weeks in just back surgery, so. Right now, I'm still on five pound weight limit and all that kinda stuff. We'll see how it goes.
Hope everything works out. There you go. Hope so. Charles?
No, thing's pretty good. I'm hoping the summer stays that way.
I wanna complain to the commissioner of the cemetery. Oh, that's me. I put brand-new flowers out on my mom's grave, and I don't know what we're gonna have to do about this. This is the second time this has happened. I waited till after Memorial Day to put 'em on. They were stolen within three days.
With all that duct tape you had on?
Exactly. I taped it out, and they ripped it off, wadded it up.
Did you find them on anybody else's, or they taken somewhere?
We looked. I looked.
What are you out for?
It's two graves.
We've had a lot. That happens a lot.
Really?
Believe it or not, that happens a lot.
I'm thinking about putting electro shocks.
I convinced my parents to put side pockets on there where we put inexpensive little things in it. That way it wouldn't happen, 'cause as long as I've been on the commission, that's gone wrong. And we can't catch it. We don't know who did it. You know, who really think that whole lot of steel flies off a dead person's grave? I mean, I just can't figure it. But it's going on for your head.
Somebody got some good-looking flowers, that's all I can say.
Maybe they're putting it on theirs, their family plots or something.
Oh, I'm sure they're taking and putting them somewhere.
I'm sure they're in a different cemetery. That way you can't find them.
Right. Can y'all put up a camera, like one of the...
To cover the whole cemetery? That's a bunch of space.
Big territory.
Yeah. It's a big territory.
Larry?
Yes, we actually had one, two, three, five more. We had all good deals for sale. All of them sold. There's the prices if you wanna look.
Did we get what we've kinda hoped for?
Yeah.
Good.
Have you already spent the money on the new ones yet?
We bought one new one. We'll get to pay for the other new one when comes through our budget.
Wow. Anything else?
No, I just need y'all to approve that. They moved us.
Yeah, no. They did pretty good on the sales.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah. It usually does, so.
You need to pack?
We need, yeah. We need a motion to accept those.
I move to approve all, all that with duct deals, sales.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with a "aye". Post saying, motion passes. What about, I had somebody ask me about one of the police vehicles that we have.
We, we need to put that on. Do we approve it last time? We never did put it on there.
Do they have to go in there, or can we sell them?
I mean, as long as it's fair market value. You know, if it's to another agency or something, you know, we wouldn't have to, but to an individual, we would probably want to.
Okay. It's an individual that's asked about it. That's interested in one of them. There's a, what, 2016?
14, isn't it?
Maybe 16.
Okay.
I think 14, that right down.
And there are two of them?
Just one.
Is that the one?
One burnout.
They already picked it up.
The burnout one? Okay.
Well, that's what I'm trying to take here.
Oh, so insurance took it off our hands?
Yes.
I figured they just told it out and say, "Do something with it."
Well, they should have anyway.
Okay. Jill, give me that. Travis?
I don't got none.
Mike? Ms. Baker?
I had a few things. I was, we're gonna have a block party on our street on July 6th. We do it every year, and I was wanting to know if we could get it blocked or, or the street blocked from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
We have a concert that night.
On the 6th?
And that's Saturday night?
Saturday nights, that's the pop 2000 concert.
Well, we got, we got a Friday night and a Saturday night concert that weekend. Sat, the Friday is the Sparks in the Park. The Saturday is that pop 2, pop 2000?
Yeah, pop 2000.
Pop 2, whatever they call it. I think they're expecting two, between two and 3,000 people.
How many?
Between two and 3,000.
Okay, so you guys come in at the bottom of the hill, right? You park down there. Can we just have the top block blocked? 'Cause we have kids that play out there.
No, no, and I know you do, and that's why I hate that this has come up like this. I don't know.
We, we're not gonna have them empty ourselves. I mean, 'cause we're gonna have every officer available at the concert.
Yeah.
And guys working.
What, what do we usually do to block it?
Just barricade it.
Just barricade?
Barricade it.
And we have, we have over 70 people that are usually there, so we have people if we needed to, to block it.
Where do you, where do you do, I know on the 231 end, you'd do it right out at 231, just so no one would turn in there and have to try to get out, but where would you block it on the other side?
We can do it like right before you go down the hill, like.
We'd only leave Chirp Street open, so.
Yeah. Like right before you get to Chirp.
Yeah, okay, for a turnaround and stuff, for people to get back out. Do you think that, I mean, do, I don't know how people go in and out, I'll be honest with you. We will, we'll be using that back field, but most of them probably come back out towards town, don't they?
Correct.
Unless it's somebody that, local, that knows how to get through there, but if it's blocked, it's blocked.
If they come out at the bottom, if they had a sign that was saying, "The street closed", they may come out the other way, out of the town to help you out.
Yeah, they just go down the street.
Leave the gates locked on Brusco Road, so they can come back to the park.
Yeah, that would work.
Well.
Make them come out the main gate.
And not let any traffic out onto Brusco Road for that one. 'Cause it's not a hill, it's not one of the really big ones.
Your crowd, they, they need that gate that night.
No, it won't be that big. If we'd had five or six thousand people, that would be different, but not.
Well, let me ask you this. Will the, what are you planning on doing?
Um, fireworks.
What time?
Well, we're gonna start at four, but like we don't have sidewalks or anything, so it's kinda, that's why we were wanting to get blocked for the kids.
No, I have no problem with that, 'cause like I say, I know we've done that before.
What time are you gonna do the fireworks, though? There's a concert going on.
We're gonna do it when it gets dark, so probably around like eight o'clock.
Right in the middle of the concert.
Right in the middle of the concert.
With a father?
I'm afraid it would. Yeah. But the concerts are usually over at 9:30.
That's what I was gonna check on this one.
There's four, four acts or five acts at this one. They're all short. They're not gonna be playing long, but.
Could your timetable change any?
It would, it would be really cool if you could start the fireworks just as the concert got over. That would be awesome.
Yeah, so you're thinking like 9:30?
That's, isn't that about what time we used to wrap up?
That's what I'm hoping this one is. Some of them.
Whenever y'all have Sparks in the Park, you don't start shooting until 9:30.
9:30 is when we do Sparks in the Park.
Like it's, you would never shoot them at 9:00, because it's just not starting.
Yeah, and the reason we do is because we have a concert, and we, they know to quit at around 9:30.
Well, we've got all the time. He's set with it, but.
Wish we could do that, sit later.
But the only time it's ever dark enough is if we got weather coming in or something. If it's a bluebird, you would never shoot fireworks at 9:30.
And 9:20, you still got pretty much daylight.
I mean, you, days are as long as they're gonna be.
Hang on just a second. He's looking.
I'll see what time the concert's at.
See what time it is. That was scheduled.
What date do you wanna close it?
Six. Six. It's on Saturday.
On Saturday. On Saturday. I thought Friday, Friday, and we shooting our Sparks in Parks on Saturday.
On the 5th, on Friday.
Friday. Oh, that'd work fine.
Oh, yeah.
On that park.
Yeah, but it's just the timing.
Yeah, we didn't see that, too.
Yeah, it's just the timing.
Two nights at Park, that's good.
If you could do it just a little later, and you'll know when we shut off, 'cause it's quiet, you know?
Yeah, we can hear you guys.
Oh, gosh, you can't. It gets loud sometimes.
I can hear it all the way in my house.
I don't know where you live, but I, yeah, yeah.
Okay, he's looking. We're gonna go away and then we'll, I'll get with you before we finish this, and we'll get all that worked out.
The other thing I was, well, two other things. Can we have someone come down our road to cut the grass, like especially where Churchill is, the street? It's, it's on Brusco Road, but like the grass is like.
We, we lack, we lack about a half a day's worth. Our gentleman, our gentleman that runs the equipment had a blood clot in his leg last week. It was his first time. He's made his round. We'll be done with this week. Sorry about that. Brusco Road, you like the personal, we usually always do, but anyway, we'll get it this week, I promise.
Okay, thank you.
It's supposed to be pretty all week, too, so. No rain inside.
I thought it rained all week. See, I keep hearing that.
Well, unless it's changed since this morning, or yesterday, which it could have.
It starts next week again. So it's supposed to be pretty all through the week this week.
And get hot.
It's supposed to be 95 Saturday.
92, 94, I think that's all.
And I was wondering, I don't know what the park is called, but it's like when we're coming on to Churchill Road, like it's on the street from Oldham, but it's the little.
The Little Bitty Park.
Yeah.
Has it got a name?
I don't think it ever was.
It's just always called the Little Park. I don't really know.
Mini Park.
So I was wondering now that Ohio County did get some funding in, if we could get some equipment back at that park, since all the equipment was taken from it, or are you guys using it for something else?
Well, I know they're wanting some equipment back up at Oldham Park as well, and we have three parks within two blocks of each other, so I don't know that we'd be able to do that.
And that stuff's expensive. It's crazy how expensive that stuff is.
Well, the, the equipment that was there, you know, it was so old, like there was WASP and everything, and you don't know what you're about to.
Well, insurance probably made us take a lot of it down because of what's going on. And I, I'm sorry, but I would say that one would be kinda hard to do, 'cause I know they're still wanting to do some more stuff at Oldham, and we're still trying to get plans on it with the pickleballs coming in, and they talked about doing some playground equipment up there closer to it to tie it all in together. And we're always looking for more at the other park, too, so.
And we listen for every grant we can get, if we try to get stuff like that, too. We don't wait for it.
Do you guys work with Red?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
On a regular basis.
Yeah, they're, they're good sources. That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, so I have several issues, okay? Where we, where I live is in.
Can I get your name?
Oh, Hope McCevez.
Okay.
Okay, where I live is like the bottom of the hill, and all this water, like over here and on this guy's property, he's got the overflow of that lake on his property. And when it comes down, it shoots right in our backyard, and it's washing our backyard away.
Can I ask where you're exactly at on Cherry Lane?
Steve Geary is the owner of the property next door, and the hill where the pipe's coming down, the overflow pipe. But I've got pictures, I've got videos, I've got everything.
So does it come into the ditch that goes behind those houses? Is that the one?
There's, there's no, I mean, there's, where it's coming from, there's not a ditch there. It just comes down in our backyard, underneath our building, and comes straight through. And it's so bad that it's washing away from the house now on our garage, to the house, the attached garage. But it's like this deep, like on our house. And like I said, I've got pictures, I've got videos, how fast that water comes rushing down.
I just, we just worked on a water problem last year on Cherry Lane, and we got it fixed. So I'm, I was curious where yours exactly was. I need to, I would probably need to come out and look at it, so I'd know exactly where it was at.
Right, we are. It's hard to explain. Do you know where Beth's daughter-in-law lives? Okay, do you know where that empty abandoned house is with the tall grass?
Yes, I do know where that one's at.
Okay, we're right across from it.
Okay.
Okay, we've got the ditch that's in between us.
Right.
Okay, well, we're the last house, or before you get to that empty lot with that big building. Sorry, I don't.
It, it, I would have to go out there and look at it again, but I'm pretty sure I know where you're at out there.
Right, right. But this water, and then it's coming that way, and then up this way, it's coming down. And it's, it's going through that ditch so fast that it's just, it's washing. Yeah, I mean, it's, hang on, that thing that's in the middle of the, the street, the culvert?
Culvert?
Yeah, the culvert. It's like, like going over the road. It's, it's so bad.
When they designed that, they didn't put, they didn't dig the ditches down. They put them basically on top of the, and it really didn't.
And it's cracking the road.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and then, and the culvert was, used to be like this, now it's like this. And it just, it's really bad.
Again, I'll have to come out and look at it, 'cause we dealt with it last year. We, Larry and I went out, we went out a couple times.
I think I've talked to Larry before.
This is on private property, too.
That's, that's where we get into. Yeah, we can.
But now that, that overflow, I don't see how that should be there coming through our yard.
Well, see, that overflow was there before any of those houses were built. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. That lake's been there for years.
But how come it's just now starting to get really bad?
'Cause we're having so much rain, and anymore we have so much rain.
And when it comes, it comes at one time.
We didn't used to have rain like this.
And, and there's other areas in town we're having issues with.
Right.
There's motorbellers all the time out there.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, it's damaging our house.
Again, when, when I went out there and examined the road and examined the houses out there, I was shocked how poorly designed it was, because whoever built the houses, they built them right on the ground, and then they did not do anything to get a water, the water away from the houses. I mean, like people put in culverts that were like this big around. Well, it's not a culvert, that's a pipe. And, you know, it's, there's no way for the water to get out of there. It's, it's a, it's a bad situation. I understand what you're going through.
Right, I mean, 'cause I don't know what else to do. If it's gonna damage your house, who's gonna pay for those damages?
And, and I hate to say this, 'cause I hate to put up, but it turns into be a civil matter then.
Yeah, 'cause it's coming off of their property on yours.
Right. I mean, like I said, I've got videos. The video, so, the water's so strong that we had railroad ties. Eventually, we, we had railroad ties on our play area. And eventually, we were gonna put crap in there. It's literally, that water is rushing so hard, it's pushing all those railroad ties against the fence. And it's like, my gosh, you know? And I couldn't imagine if you had a pool there. You, you couldn't have one, because the people that lived there before the older lady, they had a pool. So how did they, how did it not get washed away? You know, I don't know. But that's my issue. And then the other issue is the abandoned house. That grass is, it's tall.
Have you, have you wrote a citation?
I said violation, I don't guess.
Yeah, I mean, nobody, nobody ever comes there. I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm new to Beaver Dam, and I, you know, I love it here. You know, and everybody keeps their yards neat and nice, and that, you know, there's nobody ever comes.
Do you know who owns the property?
I have to look it up.
Well, I mean, you did send it to the people, and they don't live around here anymore?
He's our code enforcement officer.
That's why I asked him if he wrote him a citation.
Barbers? Really?
They got a water problem that's huge down there.
Yes, barbers.
Queen County should be shot. I mean, honestly, that was ridiculous.
She lives, not where they said she lives, 'cause the address still shows the house in Cherry Lane. And they're supposed to come by and mow it and pick it up and all that. They had that big tree down in the backyard last night.
Right, that was actually in the ditch.
And they come and they got it all cut up and cleaned up, and they fixed the manual in the garage, and then mowed the grass, and, but it's just, wait for them to show up to get the letter to go from there, 'cause that's the only contact I have for them. 'Cause I think even the water will get still sent to that house. And it's been empty for five, six years, probably.
I didn't know she was gone. I should've.
What's the name of the people?
Barbara Bunch.
Barbara Bunch.
Oh, that house, okay.
No, there's two barbers.
She's the one you work for, good board.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna go check it out?
Yeah, we've already, the notices are already been sent to her, just a matter of going through.
No, no, I'll talk to you about.
I would like to just come see, yeah, Charles wants to come with me, too, so we'll go up there and look. He's, we're just, he's wanting to get a lay of the land. Like, I am, I wanna make sure I'm talking about the right house.
Right, right.
So, yeah, before you leave, make sure you give me, give me your number, so I can get in touch with you, or call you before we come out there.
I appreciate this.
I think that's why some of the lots behind you off that other street don't have houses on.
Yeah, 'cause.
Well, like if me and my husband knew what we know now, we wouldn't have ever bought the house, never. You know, it's a beautiful home, but it's just so much, and I don't wanna have to put another ditch in our backyard. I mean, you know, I don't know. It's just a beautiful home, and I hate for it to have ditches all around it, you know?
Oh, I understand. That, that, we've had issues with that whole development. And like I say, it was built back in the late 60s.
The little Caitlin and her husband, Caitlin Provis, she works downtown. She was telling me that they've got a pebble gravel, gravel driveway, and she said water was just bubbling out of it. It's like, there's no.
It's probably coming out of the back culvert that they got in the grounds, just shooting up out of the culvert. 'Cause if they get overflowed with water, it'll go out wherever it can get released, and it'll go straight up if it has to. Doesn't matter.
Is there any way that y'all can come in and redo everything to make it better?
You're talking about digging everybody's yard up all the way down through there.
Yeah, I didn't know. I was just.
Well, and the thing of it is, the ditches like in the front, even if we went in and dug them a foot or two deep, it's not gonna change the, the amount of water coming off the, the hill.
On your end, it won't change that much. It'll change getting down the road, but getting to your house, it ain't gonna affect nothing.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause like I said, I've got it kinda no place.
Right.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all listening to me.
And we will come look at it. Like I said, make sure I get your phone number before you leave.
Okay. Mary Ann?
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Piper. You know, supposed to be, we have Reese Brown and Jack's Brown here. And we come from Ohio County United for Youth. We've got some papers for you. I think Jack's is gonna give those to you. And of course, and then Rubell's wants.
Jack's is getting tall. I mean, really tall.
Thank you.
These are good, good young people. But we, you made it, I don't know if you've heard of our group, but we started in November. We're meeting monthly. And if you can kind of recall what Together We Care used to do, we're focused on building developmental assets for young people and building the community in all different kinds of ways for youth, so. This isn't all volunteer groups, and there's no paid staff. Any money that we have goes directly to providing activities and services for young people. So you can see our mission statement there. It's about empowering young people and the community to try to do good things for, for youth. And so we have four committees. We're continuing Celebrate the Child. We have a good event in April already planning for '25, so that's one of our committees. We have an anti-bullying committee. Probably are aware of that. The school district has addressed that, but there's still issues. And we hear that from families quite often. Life and career preparation. We have some great people that are in industry that are interested in that. And then our little group here, Youth Empowerment and Promotion of Forty Assets. One of the reasons that, you can see some of the things that we've done there. And are working on for the future, but something that we're interested in is empowering young people. And years ago, we used to have representatives from the youth sector for the school board and the fiscal court. I don't recall if we ever had for the city councils, but that's something that we're interested in, is having a young person who is interested and then selected by getting references from teachers or other, other folks to certify that they would be a responsible member. Not actually a member, but someone that's just addressing issues about youth with the city council and maybe advising you on some things that have to do with young people. So that is one of our requests, to see if you might be interested in doing that. I mentioned it briefly to the mayor, and Sandy Robinson, you probably know, is a proponent of Things for Young People, and she's been there with the assets.
We'll just volunteer her right now. She's not here.
She's not here.
She's not here, so we just vote her in.
She told me she wouldn't be here, but she, I don't know if she did mention it to you, but she's in support of what we do. But that is, that is one request we have. The other is, is perhaps for a small amount of funding. We thought about $500. We have collective funds to be able to do Celebrate the Child, but we're keeping that in a separate fund. And this is through Ohio County Resources. You might be familiar, that is the group with the fiscal court that is a 501(c)(3) and manages, is the fiscal agent for nonprofits that don't have the organization or money to become a 501(c)(3). So Ann Milton is the treasurer of that, and so she manages our funding. But we have a little bit of money left from Celebrate the Child, but we have other projects that we're wanting to do. We've just used personal donations so far, just of members that have donated things. But we're wanting to do things like, we have Ohio County Youth Sunday Plan for September 15th. That's a project that we're working on, and so that'll be a day where we just try to contact churches in all of the Ohio County communities to try to have a day where they just focus on young people, to recognize their accomplishments, to involve them, to let them give the sermon if they, if there's someone willing to do that. But just to make a special day where young people are invited to church and then also recognized for what they do. That's the kind of thing that we want to do. It's not expensive to do that, but, you know, we need to do a little mailing and, and, you know, there's, there's a small amount of expense with the kind of projects we want to do. So another thing, some of you are probably participating in the Great Pencil Handout. We did that with Together We Care for years and tried to continue it after, after COVID. But, so we're planning to do that the first day of school, which is August 7th. And that's when we involve people in the community like you to come and greet every student that comes to school on that morning and give them a pencil with a message about assets. So I included the 40 developmental assets for you here, if you're not familiar with them. And the second page is just an invitation for you or somebody now if you'd like to come to our next meeting, this next Monday. And that, that sheet includes some of the reasons why we wanted to begin this group. There are some alarming statistics about young people. You know, some are doing great, like these two here, but we know that many people are struggling, young people are struggling, and mental health issues are an enormous problem. And these 40 assets are a way to, to build a community and address those kind of concerns for young people. They've done decades of research with young people and have found that if they have thirty or more of these 40 assets, they're almost guaranteed to avoid early sexual involvement, drug and alcohol use, and very likely then to have positive behaviors like fifth grades and being involved in their community, avoiding violence and those kind of things. So it's just a framework. Everybody can build assets, and that's why we are excited about it, because as long as people know about this, they can begin to do it in their own circle with young people they know and in their business or church or wherever they, they have some power, so. But that was our two requests for today, just a quick, I did. a quick, um, I didn't keep it too long, but, um, we, um, were hoping you might have an interest in having a young person, um, attend your meetings and just give, uh, feedback to you, and then also if there might be some, a small amount of funding for our group for this year.
Any questions for the group? Did, did the city ever have that? I know we haven't since I have, but when I was on the fiscal court, we did, uh, high school, huh?
High school student?
No. Cody Chan.
Oh.
Do you remember Cody?
Yeah, yeah.
That was, been a while, of course, it's been a while since I was on fiscal court.
I think we did, uh, we, we don't, we don't participate in, in any donation to any group, because we had the fatherhouse there, but something we could possibly do if it's alcohol-related through ABC.
Yeah, I have a thought about that.
We can find the funding. We've got some avenues.
We just kind of make sure we go through the right hooks.
Gotcha, well, totally, yeah.
Got to keep auditors happy.
Yeah, yeah, I can guarantee that'll be money well-used and, and.
The funding part doesn't concern me, we can make.
If we can get, if something can be tied in with alcohol.
Representative on the board here, KLC, we might have to give us some good guidance on that.
Well, we can do that, for one thing, they can't be a voting member of the board.
That's true.
Commission, because we're set up by state statute, but, uh, I know they've done it on the fiscal court, so I don't see why there would be any problems having a.
I know we need something in our records resolutions.
Well, we would need to have that approved in the minutes that we're going to have.
And a, a non-voting member.
Non-voting ex-official member, it would just be a youth member, youth, or, call it a youth advisor to the commission, it doesn't have to be commission member, we can do anything we want to like that. When do you think they would have that person selected?
Probably in the new school year, we have, you know, we have the, um, applications ready, um, but, you know, wanted to see if it was, we're planning to approach the other groups that we spoke up to, so, but you're the first ones for, just guessing, helping to find out about the meeting tonight, so.
I don't see any problem with that, we would just need, when the time comes and you all have a individual name ready, we would have to approve it to be in the minutes that that person is going to be the, whatever we want to call it.
Um, um, we call it student representative on this, um, page, you know, but whatever you'd like to call it, we, yeah, we, and we don't leave an answer today, we just.
No, I, I think we're safe to say that it'd be no problem at all to do it.
Would you like them to be a resident of you again?
Probably preferable, just, again.
Right, well, they, they'd be most likely be interested.
Well, they'd be most likely to be interested, and then it just, it saves on any problems coming up, because of the, state statutes are pretty strict on, on, on the commission, absolutely, but I just think it would be if we could do it, I know it may not work out that way, but that would be preferable, I'll leave it at that, not necessarily mandatory.
Gotcha.
Is everybody okay with this?
I think it sounds good.
So, like I said, you get us a name.
I know the Lions Club's doing a lot of things like this, uh, throughout the school systems across the United States right now, they've got one of the biggest youth programs, youth programs going in and out of schools anywhere in the nation, because we're working, uh, with that group out of, uh, Madisonville, my son's at Astra's at Central City, he's working through that, we've got a pretty good, pretty good group story.
Is there a Lions Club locally now?
Mm-hmm.
Very, that's okay.
Yeah, the Lions.
TC's big in it.
Who is?
TC, Sandoval.
The, the Lions.
Tyson, so you've got Mallory too.
Strong youth program, that could help, would probably be real interested in helping use this.
Aren't you in the Lions Club?
We will contact them.
Aren't you in the Lions Club?
Okay.
I, I haven't been able to be involved too much with it, but, uh, I've got, got two sons that have been, we work, work through, uh, our mother church in, in Madisonville, but, uh, and I didn't know they had such a strong program going until about two years ago, year ago.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
So, we're good to go on that?
They're going to talk next time.
It's all right.
Reese, you're not afraid of us, you know better than that, you're not afraid of us at all.
Thank you all for.
Jax, Jax might be a little bit around me as much, but I know you shouldn't be afraid of us, you know me too well.
Need to brag a little bit more about these two, they're, you know, we have a group of awesome young people here that are volunteering and so many of them ask these, they were just, um, uh, they helped with our grief camp, with, um, Celebrate the Child, with somebody, somebody with their names and, and so.
Kevin, she's afraid if she starts talking, you'll start talking, I'll stop.
I know, we'll stop.
That's what it is.
I have a lot of stories on Reese and Jax, but I, I could probably come up with some, now on your dad, I got tons, but now on you all, I don't have too much.
Thank you all very much, we can take care of that, and, let's see, what is the dates? August twelfth will be our meeting in the month of August.
Okay.
And that may be too early, but.
Yeah, I would guess it might be September, but.
September ninth would be the next one.